Good evening, welcome to our school reunion, it's Monday, January ninth, 2023, six o'clock. We're in the sixth total license board meeting, seven building.
Mr. Gannon?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scaram?
Here.
Ms. Colton?
Here.
And Ms. Williams?
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will continue. It's a nice meeting, it was known as first day statutes. Do we have community participation? Pretty good, bro, here, but I think we might be.
I agree.
Okay. Hold on one second, let me read this. A reminder for any citizen that is speaking during community participation, complete the sign and sheet by the builder to accurately provide the administration with name, address, phone number, or email. This will help the administration with any call of if needed. Finally, the community participation period is an important time for the Board of Education to hear concerns, etc., of its constituents. That said, prior to making any statement, please be aware that each speaker bears the personal risk of anything they say. And community participation of school board meetings is detrimental, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual.
I wrote it down, just so I'm sorry if I snuck it right out of it. As a parent of students in the Elkhorn area school district and a taxpayer in the district, I have concerns over the talk of another referendum coming from the school board and administration. Our tax bills currently have us paying on three referendums. As a country, we're facing inflation at a forty-year-high and asking for more funds seems very disconnected with what's going on across the globe. After listening to the last meeting, it is unclear exactly what you were asking for, how many years you were asking for it, and exactly what funds will be used for. As individuals and businesses, we all have to make some difficult decisions to balance the books and assess needs versus wants. Has the district done exhaustive research to see where are areas we need to cut? Are there programs or programming we can't afford anymore? Why do we always threaten to cut teachers and increase class sizes first? What about administrative expenses and staff that have no direct impact on children? Are there areas and benefits we can't afford anymore? We all know a referendum is about the sale of goods and how it's presented. Consultants are used to attempt to put you in a best-case scenario. The last referendum was split into two. The sale of this referendum is on that of 4K. While the reality is attempting to pay for the misappropriation of funds. We tried to warn people during the last one on how are we going to pay for this? Yet here we are. While most blame COVID, the reality is companies are laying off employees with the greatest number since 2008. We have a forty-year-high inflation, like I said before, and while I am considering what costs to cut at home to be more responsible. Public entities like the school district continue to go on a shopping spree. I don't want the school district to paint the community in a shameful way by a no vote being against the children or teacher employment security. This is a matter of financial responsibility and a math problem. I also find it very convenient that this referendum potentially could be quietly voted upon in the spring after a midterm with very low turnout as a small community with one of the largest employers being the school district. I'm sure we know where the voting base would come from. If a school district was run as a private business, would you be outspending or would you be trying to be more efficient and effective trimming the fat and guarding against wasteful spending? My fear is the continuous school district expansion is about to become an upside-down car payment where we turn one depreciating item into another more expensive depreciating just hoping to make the payments without an asset. What's after this? Then what? And then what?
All right, next we have FFA National Convention. All right, I'm gonna turn over to a couple of our officers, and we'll turn over to them.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having us. My name is Macy Cruz, and I'm a senior elementary high school and our chapter president.
My name is Isabel Hennig, I am also a student, and I am going to be vice president of the chapter.
This fall, we had the opportunity to go to Indianapolis, Indiana, for our national FFA convention. We had the opportunity to take nineteen chapter members, two advisors, and one of our school guidance counselors. Mr. Chabak, I am sorry to say that if you ever do come back with us, Ghostified has been closed down permanently.
So it wasn't as good of a trip as you?
It was still fantastic, because I tried different places to eat.
While we were there, we got to attend multiple sessions, and we got to listen to same-teams of speakers. One of the proud things that our chapter that should do during these sessions was we were awarded with the Freesia Award because we were made eligible for the Freesia Award. Your award is a gold rating at the state convention, and so that was a pretty cool thing.
So with the convention also comes a giant expo. It does have a shopping mall, but it also has so many colleges and agricultural businesses that come in. There's a bunch of booths that's really hard to hit in one day, but you make your way around and you talk to so many new people, you learn new things. And there's always also like a scavenger hunt kind of treasure that every chapter chooses to participate in that gets you going to every single one of these places.
So while we were there, we also got to tour the Cortina facility where we were able to learn about crop protection and seed production. And while we were there, we also got some fun souvenirs, and we had a really great time.
One of the activities that we get to choose from is the rodeo, the rodeo concert. Every year, the rodeo comes back bigger and better, and it's an awesome thing to see. Even though I would consider Elkhorn a kind of small town, I myself had never really seen a rodeo before I went to national convention. It's a great activity, we saw bull riding, we saw rock riding with just horses, and we also saw trick riders and a train pony that was rescued from floods.
We also were able to look around the city more, and we got to visit some of their monuments and look at more historical areas of the cities. That was pretty fun for us to walk around and learn more about what the history was.
The picture of the stairs, is that going up the tower?
Yes.
They're up for the challenge, they opt to walk in rather than take the elevator.
Thank you guys so much for having us tonight, we do though have to get back to our own chapter meetings.
Questions first.
Oh yeah, questions first, sorry.
I would just say, great job that they always represent us really well.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your words.
Hi, my name's Abby, this is Elkhorn Hosa, and I'm the president of Elkhorn Hosa, and this is my fourth year competing, second year doing public service announcement with Thieves League. And last year, we made it to state and internationals, and we did really well, and we hope to stay in this year.
Hi, I'm Maddie, I'm the vice president of Hosa, and I've also competed in PSA all four years. And experience that I got at internationals last year that I really appreciate getting was being with a couple of leadership conferences between a lot of schools that I use now. And Abby helped walk the stage last year for getting a hundred hours, a hundred service hours to our community, and a lot of us are aiming to do better here this year.
Hi, I'm Anna, I'm VP of Service Projects, I also compete at PSA, and I have for all four years. Last year, our topic was Be the Match, which is a national volunteer organization program, and is also our service project for this year.
Hi, my name is Rachel, I also compete at PSA, and this year, our theme is why mental health matters, so we made our thirty-second PSA video, and on Saturday, we will be giving our formal speech to behavioral judges.
Hi, my name is Breighton, last year, I competed in behavioral health and the healthcare issues exam, and this year, I'm competing in pharmacy science and the healthcare issues exam again. And something I liked about state and international competition was they focused a lot on college and career readiness and being a medical professional.
Hi, my name's Mackenzie, and something I'd like to bring to your attention is Hosa's dedication to giving back to our community. Just in December, we accumulated two hundred and seventy-four hours for open arms free clinic in Elkhorn. We also donated two hundred and fifty-two items to Twin Oaks and a hundred and fifteen items to families in the NICU at Children's Hospital.
Hi, I'm Carly, I'm from Elkhorn Hosa's Public Health. Last year, we presented about oral health at the state and international level. At state, we got first place, and we're hoping to do the same this year with cardiovascular health. With that being said, we want to share some cardiovascular health facts with all of you guys. Starting with mine, recently, Damar Hamlin, a football player, went into cardiac arrest during a recent game. This was caused by an arrhythmia, specifically a phenomenon called comitoquordis that struck Hamlin cardiac, struck Hamlin to cardiac arrest, which could make the patient pass away with low to mild chest impact to a wall of the chest. Also, doing little exercises such as like running, walking, jump roping, and any cardio can decrease your chances of heart disease or heart failure.
Hi, I'm Jacob, I'm also on the public health team for competition, and my two facts were that the heart can continue beating even when it's disconnected from the body, and the beating sound of your heart is caused by the valves of the heart opening and closing.
Hello, I'm the third member of the public health team, and my name is Millie Zlinski, and my perspective is that in the United States, more than every five dozen do have a disease. And then someone taking less than five grams per day can significantly reduce the chance of beating heart lose.
Hello, I'm Alicia, I'm also a part of the public health team, and I would like to inform you that there are sixty thousand miles of blood vessels in your body, which is enough to wrap around the earth twice. And also, more heart attacks happen on Mondays than on any other day of the week, and more heart attacks occur every year on Christmas than on any other day. Please remember to live healthy.
And just to interject, how many of you at state last year were able to do fast training, so first aid and severe trauma or CPR training? So we have quite a few of them that are CPR trained out and about in our community and in our schools.
I got the practice behind the arm, just thank you.
Hi, my name is Jillian, I am a vice president of public health. Last year, I competed in life of telemedicine, and the healthcare issues exam made it to internationals. One thing I really liked at internationals was communicating with a lot of people around the US and different countries. And then this year, I'm competing for all the different internationals, stand for election and healthcare issues.
Hi, I'm Jillian, I competed in forensic science now for about three years, and this is my second year as a host officer. I started as a middle school liaison, which basically just kind of connects our middle school Hosa chapter with our high school Hosa chapter. Recently, got our middle school chapter started up last year, and it's really great to kind of meet our high schoolers, kind of hopefully the way for our middle schoolers for our simple son. As for always, we're very thankful for your time tonight, and very happy to have you as a host of the conference.
And so we're here again to ask for permission to stay overnight for our state leadership conference in April at Tula Vista in Wisconsin-Dell. And then also, hopefully I'm not jinxing us, but to go to our international leadership conference in Dallas, Texas, which is June twenty-first to twenty-fourth, I believe. The reason we're asking for permission for Dallas so far in advance is, we had a terrible time in journalists before. And if you don't get the conference hotel, we were forced to take public transportation, it was not a really good experience. So by allowing us permission now, that as soon as those hotel rooms open, that we can reserve those, kind of guessing how many rooms we might need, and then if we need to cancel something, we can cancel some. And so the details I have on both state and on the international trip, our last year's prices, I don't have a lot of details on internationals at this point. For state, I use last year's numbers. Cost depends a lot on how many kids they want to have in each room. Typically, four to six, and the total cost per student tends to be about the one hundred and forty, one hundred and fifty dollar amount for the state competition. And that's April second to April fourth. And then internationals, as many years as I've gone, we have kept the international cost to three hundred dollars per student, which includes their flight, their hotel, and we fundraised and used the money that we're given from district to supplement the rest of that. And we did at least one meal, I think, a day at internationals. Everybody here, except Jacob's already been, but everybody else who's been to internationals, they all attended Nashville last year.
Do you ever have a student that can't afford the cost to go, and how do you, how do you make that possible?
There are very nice people around us that pay close calls.
Okay. And what is your kind of chaperone to students, just student ratio?
So on the sheet, I have a candidate, Melan, and I will be chaperoning, so I'm also. We do have fifty-four people competing, our highest ever at regionals this Saturday. If, if that many go through, we will need another chaperone for sure, but it's usually about ten or eleven to one, which fits fine, and with what Hosa says is okay. And then at internationals, it might be like twelve per chaperone. But they're all good kids. But if you want to come and chaperone, I mean, there's always that. Emma walked the stage at internationals as well, but she probably wouldn't tell you that. In Hosa happening, so she documents all of the happenings for our Hosa chapter throughout the year, and her, her Hosa happening is was recognized.
I'm mostly interested on the ride, I just call it a ride.
Well, certainly, you'll still have the entry, but that's a great job.
Yes.
I'm glad to see you all there. Per our policy, though, we would need to approve this, this is overnight.
I move to approve the overnight travel request from Hosa as presented.
Is there a second? So moved in second to approve the overnight travel request from Hosa as presented.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We have a loan request from the Westside PTA.
I'm Benjamin Kishla, I'm principal at Westside Elementary, and this is...
I'm Cassie Palmer, and I can arrange a chair at Westside, and also the president of Hosa.
So we have a little proposal, we'll be asking for somebody to borrow as a loan from PTA to help administer the playground. You can see, you know, so lies the new time, this is, this is our, what we would say our K-two playground, so thirty years old. In some, in the next slide, you'll see some pictures where it's really just deteriorating. One of the hardest things is, we school full, over four hundred students, when they're trying to separate and get kids and getting through lunch at the same time, we're utilizing two playgrounds. This is a newer playground, bottom, I guess, and that, bottom, right, on the left. And that's kind of the same company that had put it together, and so you can definitely hear as we're working through it, if they get a chance to go for this playground, it's that playground, a lot more excitement than when they go now this year because of the way scheduling works, you go back to it, so. This is definitely more apt, please, if you're like I said, jump in, apt for like the younger kids, oh, you're good, you're good, that's fine. The younger kids, but you know, the playground down the bottom as well is just as good for the younger kids, and it's kind of that jealous piece, so. A lot has changed, you know, over thirty years, but you guys know. And you can't see, I'm trying to do the best I can with the pictures, you look at the bottom one here, that's actually a hole. A lot of this, it is a metal platform, so you can see a lot of protective coatings, all the flare off, coming, coming off, you see in that pipe, the right-hand corner, they also have some deterioration of it. And so Eli, our grounds, head of the grounds, as they go through and they look at all our playgrounds, and this is found, different parts of the inspection, so. Wherever we're at, when you get into the playground, and at the end of the year, this one will be coming off, so it hasn't come pretty unsafe. We've got some other holes, it kind of twists the tic-tac-toe, and you do little gaps and things in there that kids like to jam their hands in, so they'll get it out of there, so. Just trying to help update and keep it a safe, you can't mark it. So this is the proposed playground. Pretty much, if you notice, it's very similar. You've got slides, like the other playground, this one, we've got the little play area down there where you can play, store, you've got your climbing areas. Just a lot of things for the K-five. This playground is, I guess, graded five to twelve-year-olds, so we'll be able to, I guess, open up for, for us, as we work on schedules, to have some of the older kids go and utilize that playground as well, it's going to be as exciting, we have a basketball hoop and everything like that, but. This is the proposed playground, we're working with New Recreation on, with Eli, and have some discussions with Phil as well. We'll have the next one, so this is the cost. Something like this, which was new to me, is sixty thousand dollars. That doesn't include the demolition of the old playground and the removal of the flat or the base that's in there and stuff like that, so. Demolition, an estimate would be about ten grand as well, so we're looking at a total of about seventy thousand. So what, what we have done...
Demolition, removal, and installation of the new?
Uh, ins, sorry, sixty thousand is the installation of it.
Okay.
Good question, and you were here for the other playground. The company used to do where volunteers could come in, and that would take off some of the pricing, and they've gone away from that, I was talking to Bill about it, it ended up being, you know, some parents, then you have a rain day, and no one would show up for the next time, and so it just became more and less of that round, so. They will put it in as long as we have the ground ready to go. And to that same question, this will cover the same space, might be just a little larger, but it will cover the same space where they existed by that ways as well, so they don't feel the more demolition, like standard.
So is it a different company doing the demolition and removal, and the installation?
Well, that, that, yes, so is the plan. So we, well, I'll answer that question right away. We're working at, Carrie Brown, her husband, has helped us out already last summer, and it expanded, you have to have a certain distance for swings, right, for the mat, and so he helped expand that. He volunteers do that, donated the equipment and all, you know, the hours and stuff like that, so. I'm working with Carrie, and she's also...
She's a kindergarten teacher, so she didn't know, so yeah, we're hoping that we might be able to customize that way and have a local company in that.
I've talked to Jimmy, and he thinks we have water to help us get it out, and the other piece is talking, working with Eli as well, is we don't have the, the equipment for it, the initiators and the vehicles, so that'll help as well. So hopefully, that can take away that ten thousand. Working with Eli, district would support fifty, fifty percent of it, and the Westside PTA will be fifty percent of it. It really is, and it didn't dawn on me until I had a child of my own five years ago, and we lived real close. That playground is used a lot from the community members, and so is the other one even more, but there's a lot of people utilizing this playground, well, just outside of our, our school there as well, so. Working with that, and then our ask is, oh, I'm also, sorry, I've also reached out to Katie, who's our grant writer for the district, to see if she could find a grant for us and work out, you know, maybe get tables and grants as well. So the ask would be... The ask would be that the district be willing to loan, we're asking the district if they can loan up to twenty-five thousand dollars to pay back in the later five years. We're thinking, you know, we haven't gotten final numbers with them, but thirty to thirty-five thousand. PTA right now has eight thousand for it, and we'd be willing, we're aiming for ten thousand dollars a year that would be put toward this playground on top of all the great activities that PTA fundraises and utilizes that money for for all the events at Westside as well.
I, that playground's been there since I was a kid at Westside, so I was a kid who was playing in that playground, so it's, it's becoming very, it's a priority for us at Westside.
And also putting the grant to education.
Okay.
Yeah, Justin Austin is very good about that, we had one last year, so that's our, we focus on that.
Does that include what's on the ground as well? Does that need any attention?
Our, our goal is that we can, it depends, talk to a gym, who's hoping to make a save as much as the, if this is the grab, whatever you have, and to see what we can do after that. Again, one of those things that unfortunately is kind of an uncertainty, but there is a salvage, so. And on that same question, is, you know, for demolition, you know, I want to be respectful of the volunteer, you know, and his company, and giving him a lot of time that, you know, when, when he's got some free time for his company, and they'll be able to, yeah, go over there, they'll take down, get out of it, rather than not getting there, so.
With the demolition and that portion of it, could we look at the CTE department as well, getting engaged in taking that down and reutilizing some of that material for projects within the CTE department, or turn it into recycling processing?
Saying the, the same thing, Paul, I'll reach out to Mike, Thomas, and Mike Thomas and Travis, and let's see if that's an area that you have a look at it.
Yeah, because some of that metal, they could use for projects based down in the welding lab and things like that, and if they knew the direction, I'm sure the, the kids would be excited to, to partake in demolition and removing all of the, the materials. And then if we could utilize it, it would save on costs of providing opportunities for them to construct things within those classes. So something to look into, I guess.
Still used, and will be through the end of the year, the end of the year.
Is it just the metal portions that are worn, or are there other things that are dangerous?
Uh, it's mostly the metal, that's all, so I'd have to look...
Does the comp, can a company come in and replace the metal parts without?
Not, not, I guess, cost effectively, for what it would cost to put the entire, like, every part of the metal, you know, right, then the stairs that go up, the thing, you know, the platform that's holding the slide, like, every piece of that would end up having to be, to be saved on, there's three slides on there.
And they're connecting. One part that he took a photo of is, there's like a little bridge, and you can see certain parts of that that are, you know, like, this part is connected, and that part, so we, we were curious if there were certain pieces that could be replaced.
Well, I'm even just thinking replacing the bridge, like, can the bridge re, be replaced without having to tear down a, spend seventy thousand dollars? I have a hard time believing that it would be seventy thousand dollars to replace some stairs and, and some, and a bridge and a couple of their areas.
And I do believe we do have a local company that would be more than happy and generous enough to look at it and see what they could do to repair, refab, put protective coatings on, and all those types of things as well, so I think we could look that way too. Because, yeah, that's a pretty big number, and if we could save a little bit of money by supporting a local establishment and getting the same type of quality product for the school, that'd be great.
Another option we could do, and I know Eli's looked at it, he's gone through some courses in terms of playground safety and equipment. We could have our insurance company take a look, I bet Jody Pross come over. I'm pretty sure what she would tell us, but honestly, probably should be replacing that.
Thirty years is a long time, for like...
Thirty years is a long time.
And I think parts of it, in the removal, haven't they, did Eli have any pieces of it or not?
A few pieces, some down there.
There's a group out of Rockford, and I can give you the name later, as a nonprofit, they may come and take it, and they refurbish it, and then we actually build playgrounds, and other ones, actually, we've done quite a few of them. But thirty years is a very long time. I mean, city gets itself in trouble, and they're not appreciating it.
Because of, like, council's like, oh, I played on it when I was this age, we talked to Van Palanis, he's like, oh, my kids were on that when they were in elementary, so we're doing like kind of the math.
I mean, if we think about like, not feeding my kids, if the kids growing up before that, the gaps in the crib was a different, I mean, everything has changed when it comes to safety, so like, I mean, all the safety warnings are different, and our kids use it, and the city uses it. It's a long time, so it's cost efficient, it's probably just to take it out, but there are groups that will come in and help with the demo, it would take some of that to refurbish. So one in Rockford, I've never done a demolition ever, I've done the setup, but it gets used, and it's a great thing. But it gets used and it's a great thing, so.
Um, I guess my other question would be, um, have you considered incorporating some things into the design that would be, uh, students with disabilities, um, friendly? The city attempted to do that, uh, on a very limited basis on their park that's, uh, in Sunset. But, um, I, I mean, I don't know it.
To answer your question, yes.
I don't know how many students we actually have that, um, but there's things, there's things that, like, kids with autism that, you know, are very friendly to them, um, not just physical disabilities, but I would like to consider the physical disability aspect of it as well, especially if the community's using it. And then kind of in relation to that, um, if it is, have we explored partnership with the city of Elkhorn in their parks department to see if there's any way that, I mean, if it's that utilized that much by the surrounding community and the homes, maybe there's some type of way that we can partner with the land department to get them to kick in some costs as well.
I agree with you on stuff, for sure. Um, as far as the, uh, assess, you know, being accessible, like you brought up too, what are we going to utilize? Again, when you're looking at cost and saving cost, um, I know, uh, Jeff is who I've been with, uh, New Recreation, it's, uh, a specific type of, uh, wood chip. And then makes it, you know, accessible for those areas like that. Um, all these kind of separate little parts of it, for instance, you know, again, everything's an added cost. If you were to take the climbing wall out, I won't say out, if you take the kind of the, the rocks, put a climbing piece, you can switch it with more of a century wall. If you want to keep this on the inside, you could put like a century wall. There, there are a, a type of different options to go through. I think, uh, first on Jeff, we need to nail down a cost, uh, that we're looking at and then we can, you know, remove a slide and put something else in, remove whatever, put something else.
Or maybe the city is willing to add, put in added value to incorporate some of those ADA, um, accessible items as well. You know, and maybe they would be able to fund additional things that would be ADA accessible. I've done a ton of research on playgrounds and ADA accessibility, so, um, it's, it's would be something that I would, um, like to see a little bit more of that. If I was to go forward, but also what is your timeline, like, when, when are you looking to try and? Cause you said you're trying to raise ten thousand dollars a year, so that to me indicates you're not looking to do this for at least three more years. Okay, but if it's gonna take you three years to raise thirty thousand dollars and you're asking us to put in, I guess I'm not, not understanding the timeline of how this is getting funded.
They would like this to be put in this summer, that the, from the school district general fund, that we would, um, allocate fifty percent of the total costs. We'd actually cover the full cost and then over the next five year period, with NTA would raise the funds to be the, the difference. Similar to like what we've done for, of course, the booster floor, I don't know.
Well, yeah, either the booster floor.
We've done that with other groups though, other PTAs and PTOs, other elementary schools.
Have all the other playgrounds been funded that way?
No, cause we've done some through construction projects. We've been able to do, I think that the first picture, I think that, that was shown, that was done through a construction project, but they haven't all of them.
So it hasn't been the PTA's responsibility though, is that heavy weight?
They have it some buildings, yes.
So you're really asking the school district to fund thirty-five thousand? And then?
Up to, yes.
And then over five years?
Cause twenty-five, cause we'll, we'll have, we'll have the ten by the end of this year.
Okay.
And we're trying to bust again, you know, we, we get above ten.
Totally, yeah, that's a lot of money to raise, right?
Eli was building a demolition camp, thirty, anything with that. And so the timeline would be, you know, since we get approval, I know, uh, Jeff, uh, the wooden assistant would come back with. I have a meeting set up with him to discuss this program where we're at for, 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 we know that the demolition will happen this summer. My goal is that we can move quickly on it so that it can be structured over summer, so it's ready to go, that's it.
In terms of funding sources, I thought another one, we had, um, a retired teacher, I think was half the, the foot fund. Who provided a donation to the school district some years ago for playground equipment and just elementary use. So we use those funds to, those part for well.
Then it is on the agenda, it's an action request.
Well, it's, well, it's an action item, I still think we should investigate it a little bit more before we do take action.
I, I would agree with you on that, the dollar amounts just don't add up completely, cause it's, uh, I think we've got thirty in the budget from Eli and twenty-five here with the numbers are seventy to fifteen short.
The other piece would be the donation plan. Would be, so seventy was ten of it.
You were gonna say like ten of it, donation for round, yeah.
Yeah, ten of it is the most of the cost for the demolition of it. So it takes care of that piece.
Okay.
And then twenty-five, up to twenty-five, you know, we're hoping it's at twenty, but is the PTA is already asked.
Yeah.
Can we just revisit the next one then?
You've got one, one bid, the one company? So you haven't gotten any competing bids? Yeah, I'd like to see remaining bids, that would be.
And also have dialogue with the CTE department and maybe one that, the local business. Get some input from other, uh, perspectives as to meeting the needs that we're looking at.
All right, so I'm just gonna make a checklist quick of what we'd like to have before bringing it back for reconsideration by the school board. One is a finalized plan on the demolition, so that we don't have the ten thousand dollar expenditure for that, whether that be via the CTE, via the group out of Rockford, that Jimmy will get the contact to you. Or whether that be using, you know, Mr. Brown and our volunteers, we can get the demo cost. One to two more bids for similar playground structures, so that we know we're comparing apples to apples related to that. And then was there something I was, well, especially with the city.
And, and Kitty James for grant writing, I mean, I would love to see that you guys come back in a month and PTA does not anything.
Exactly, I guess that's, I'd like to see more, and more funding options.
There's always funding or something, and I would, I would love it not to fall on, I'm serious.
And I do think the education foundation is, obviously there's a board that has to vote on that, that, right, to get back to ten thousand dollars, so. I think we get those items checklist and I agree, I, I would hate to see the PTO, I'd want it at the PTO.
Exactly.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next is approval of the minutes.
And, uh, Kelsey, feel free to reach, I can help on any of those and surely get that, Mr. Gray.
And then I'll email you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes from December twelfth and January third. Questions, comments?
The noise is in our minute, it's our notes, but they're separate, right? Yeah.
Questions?
I move to approve the minutes of the December twelfth, whether sessions will board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of the December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, regular sessions board meeting as presented.
Mr. Gayher.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Colton.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried, I'll do the January third.
Yes, I move to approve the minutes of the January third, twenty twenty-three, special sessions board meeting as presented.
Is there a second? Okay. It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of the January third, twenty twenty-three, special sessions board meeting as presented.
Uh, Mr. Gayher.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Colton.
I have seen.
And Ms. Williams.
I have seen.
Motion carried, general other fund bills, Mr. Trun.
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number one four eight two three two through one four eight three one nine, wire transfer numbers, five seven four through five eight seven, ACH check numbers four hundred to four twenty-eight, and two voided checks, one four seven seven sixteen, one four seven seven sixty-one. And the combined amount of six hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents. There is a memo price and additional information, several of the invoices in your board packet and then a copy of the treasures report.
Questions for Mr. Trun.
Mr. Trun, could you just, um, explain, I saw the, um, consulting thing for Legacy Solar. What is the perspective and what are we looking at doing with solar at the high school?
We're looking at the possibility of installing a solar panel project at the high school. Just analyzing what that could look like and what kind of savings that could generate for annual energy savings for the school district. So we're currently working with them, they're receiving proposals from multiple vendors and then analyzing them, seeing what the payback period would be and then bringing that back to the Buildings and Grouths Committee Hall.
Okay, and, yeah, I, I figured we were probably looking at the expenditures and then the payback time, the return on the investment. Where are we looking at, uh, doing that? Would that be on the backside of the Ag Department or, um?
At multiple locations right now.
Okay, so we haven't narrowed it down quite enough right, right now. I suppose they're probably trying to take some solar readings and figure out where the optimum exposures are and things like that.
Um, that's part of it and then the degree on the panels, I, I mean, we could spend a lot of time talking about tonight, but I prefer to have the whole report completed.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I just saw that and I was just kind of curious, cause I hadn't heard anything and I was just like, um, are, are we transitioning all the way to solar if we can or where are we gonna put it? Is it gonna be a building project on the roofs or is it gonna be on the yard or those types of things?
And the reason we're looking at the high school, it's, our electrical cost is about five hundred eighty thousand for school, our school district. And about half of that is the high school. So apparently we could, you know, potentially look at a project that would show some savings to the school district, that seems to be the logical site, so.
But do those numbers reflect, since we've had the conversion to LED lighting?
We're looking at, basically, we're, um, looking at current usage, so that would include that, yes. So we've looked at months of supply.
Have we started to see a drop in, since we made that conversion to LED?
We haven't gone back to look at the, the difference. So we're just looking at what's our energy use now, what's the peak periods? Does the peak periods matter in terms of the energy cost? And then how would that relate to whatever kind of project we have in the office? To see if that's even a viable solution. So at this point, we're looking into it, so there's really no recommendation, but I see a report coming back to the board. Do the dealings account.
And the, the small solar array that we have, will be green house that is put in.
Yep.
That's showing a good return in regards to what it's generating compared to usage.
We're, we're gonna, we're looking at what is kind of called a, a G-gauge unit, which helps us within fifteen minute intervals of measuring the energy use at our high school. And depending on when your peak period is, cause that's what gets charged then for that whole time period, we can reduce some of those peaks. As it would be impacting terms of energy costs. And, you know, again, that's, that's our largest consumption of energy is our high school, so I think that makes sense to kind of look at that, but, at this point, we don't have any final recommendations. But I anticipate we'll have a report probably in February.
Okay, thank you.
I had a, just a couple of questions on some of the credit card, um, things. Do we know what the bucks tickets were for?
The girls' basketball program played because of the buck skin.
Okay. Okay, we got it. Okay. And then when we, um, provide housing for some homeless families, is that funded through the Elkhorn Foundation or how, how do we?
Uh, yes, we have a, a donor and, and the Elkhorn Foundation provides the funding as well, which provides, um, monies to the school social workers, so we transfer and put it into a school account for them. As that gets used up, the foundation for the private nowhere.
Okay.
Just put it in there.
Okay.
So that, um, you know, the, the hotel and Holiday Express has been wonderful to, to work with this and putting in a great rate, but it's enabled us to make sure that no family in the Elkhorn area school district live in the car, that you all are. And it's only utilized after the, the case, the social workers work with the families and verify and then they continue that ongoing work to get them into temporary housing. That's the last, sorry, but, yeah, it's not district, operational funds, it's donations.
Okay.
Other questions?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of January ninth, twenty twenty-three, check numbers one four eight two three two to one four eight three one nine. Wire numbers five seven four to five eight seven, ACH numbers four hundred and four two eight, and voided check numbers one four seven seven six zero to one four seven seven six one. In a combined amount of six hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second to approve the general and other fund bills of January ninth, twenty twenty-three, checks number one four eight two three two to one four eight three one nine. Wire numbers five seven four to five eight seven, ACH numbers four hundred to four twenty-eight. Voided checks number, uh, one four seven seven six zero to one four seven seven six one. In a combined amount of, uh, six hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents as presented.
Mr. Gayher.
Yes.
This is, Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Colton.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Wanted to share with you as we go into the, um, consideration for the school board, uh, in regards to the pre-referendum. Basically, the, the background and what's led up to this point, the information related to the referendum and, uh, what that recommended question is. So, again, looking at this and we saw this initiative, you know, putting students first, um, Elkhorn area school, this, we, we're reviewing this possibility to go referendum on this E-vote for. Um, the four primary reasons is, one, that's led to this, a lack of state funding. Two, the inflationary impacts, which we heard is all time high in forty years, which is been issued, and we felt, which I would also concur is a, makes it a terrible time to, you know, go to referendum. It also has a terrible impact on school district budgets at the same time. Um, an increasingly competitive marketplace, we're seeing, just like private industry is, staffing shortages in many aspects. When I first came to Elkhorn, ten years ago, we would have about two hundred and fifty to three hundred applicants for an elementary teacher position. We get about fifteen to twenty applicants now for those positions. Many of the other positions, it's, you're really into a position where you're headhunting, you're, where you're reaching out, trying to find people to, you know, step into or be interested in those positions. Uh, one-time federal funds, um, President Trump having passed two stimulus packages, which gave monies to benefit schools, and President Biden, a third, um, will be, um, expended in this coming fiscal year, and those are not, we're not designed to sustain other operations, they're designed to help school districts recover from COVID and, and help students recover from any of that learning loss that's there. The referendum, uh, will help us sustain our current operations, first and foremost. So, giving a little bit of a background on that, in nineteen ninety-three, the state of Wisconsin, here I graduated high school woo-woo, um, and I left Wisconsin, went out west to go to school. At that time, the state of Wisconsin was the eleventh, um, highest spending per pupil in the country, had a phenomenal education system, we still do. Um, but I knew that when I left, cause I was in a pre-service teacher program in, in Flatville, that my intent was, I'm gonna go to school, my father got a Utah State to be a associate dean out there, I was gonna go through my education program and come back to Wisconsin, it was never a, you know, that was my full intent, I loved Wisconsin, wanted to come back and work here. Teacher pay was, was great, it was very competitive at the national level, and in great shape. Governor Tommy Thompson, prior to ninety-three, school boards had the authority to set the budget of whatever level we needed to offer on a year-to-year basis. So, in ninety-three, Act sixteen was passed, and what that did is that kept revenue limits in every school district in the state at the level at which they expended the prior year. So, if the school district was spending fourteen thousand dollars per pupil, that became the revenue cap. If the district was spending nine thousand dollars per pupil, that was their limit cap. Elkhorn at that time was a very low-spending school district at that point. The revenue cap got set at that lower number. It worked quite well for the first sixteen years in many aspects, there could be much debate over that. Um, but the intent was to kind of cap and control what those school districts' budgets were, and they pegged it to inflationary costs, and used inflationary indexing for the first sixteen years. So, if inflation went up two percent, then the revenue limit for school districts went up two percent. And schools could figure out how to make that work and how to operate under those rules and those guidelines. During that timeframe, Elkhorn also experienced significant student growth, and basically doubled in size from the mid-nineties to about the mid-two thousands. Uh, which, funding in the state of Wisconsin is based on how many pupils you have, so that per pupil revenue limit means for every kid you have, you get X numbers of dollars. So, if you're growing, your budget continues to go up year to year, and it, that's a good thing. If you're stable, you're okay, as long as the increased revenue limit keeps up with inflationary costs, because your budget still goes up to keep up with inflation. If you're declining enrollment, your student number's going down, that means your revenue's gonna go down, and you've got to adjust your costs in accordance with what that drops. Um, what you'll see, what happened in two thousand nine, that was the last two years, by any of, actually Governor Doyle's turn, that was the first time the state of Wisconsin moved away from the, um, inflation indexing. And the state had some very significant budgetary concerns at that point, I believe it was right after the housing market crashed, um, in that timeframe. And so you had Governor Doyle who exited, um, and Governor Walker came in, and he made it very clear when he came in, that look, we're in a state budgetary crisis, we're going to have to make some significant reductions in order to balance our state budget. That's why you see this one year where this revenue limit, um, actual change dropped, um, roughly, it was over five hundred dollars per pupil, that everybody's revenue went down, uh, by that dollar amount. Governor Walker, and that was my first year as a superintendent, he made it very clear, we're gonna have to do this, that's our budget's in this situation, but he made those legal changes that allowed school boards and school districts to have much greater authority over making those changes, taking away collective bargaining and negotiating, um, with the unions. The problem is, we, the state wasn't able to get the balance, the budget balanced then, but since that point, you'll see in black, these are the revenue limit increases from that timeframe moving forward, and in gray is the inflationary impact and increases. And this has been going on since the, basically, two thousand nine. Now, ever since my arrival ten years ago, we really made an appointment, we talked as a school district, that the funding model has changed in the state, the legislators have moved away from indexing to the, or increasing the revenue limit to the indexing. And I had asked our state legislators, I, I have good relationships with all, and I respect the fact that I was in a meeting with Senator Nass years ago, and I asked him, why can't you just peg the revenue limit in the school funding to the inflationary rate? And this is not a direct quote, but it just summarized it, and I said, like, you've done with university institutions, like schools used to be pegged to. And he said, no, the, we can't do that, we're not gonna lay that out, your schools need more money than you need to go to referendum if you need to pass that. So, in a nutshell, that is the state funding model, and if you want additional monies to exceed that revenue cap, then you need to ask the community whether or not they wanna support it, the community can vote to support it or not. Um, and it does, for better or for worse, that's what it is, I don't have a problem knowing that's the rules of the game. I think for the past ten years, you know, this board, and maybe even on several years, we've looked at seven hundred thousand, a million dollar deficits on a year-by-year basis. The way we've been able to close those are by using attrition, um, eliminating positions, um, doing creative things that wouldn't impact programming, but also significantly increasing our revenue via open enrollment and maintaining that performance, so, um, that's helped us close those budgetary gaps, where now we have millions of dollars in additional revenue via open enrollment, um, which has helped us close these grave gaps over the years. Unfortunately, the last budget by Indian, the state legislature gave districts zero dollars per pupil revenue limit increase. They basically said, you're getting these millions of dollars from the ESR funds, use that to balance your budget, and we're not gonna give you anything from the revenue perspective. When we originally looked at that, we knew we were gonna have a fiscal cliff as a school district. Uh, we talked about that, and I'll get into the history a little bit further, but the, the result of that zero-dollar revenue limit increase, um, and record inflation has put us in a position that when the ESR funds are expended, and where we're at, we're looking at about a three-point-five million dollar projected deficit next year. Typically, we've been able to handle and mitigate, you know, that seven hundred to a million dollar deficit via that revenue growth through open enrollment and so forth, but that's just too big of a gap with that inflation and the lack of that per pupil increase for teachers. It's like it's compounding on us. Um, originally, we had hoped to get to that twenty-three, twenty-four spring, but, you know, originally, we're looking at a million, a million and a half projected deficit, the inflationary costs have driven that up substantially. So, um, this is what we're looking at, assuming a two hundred dollar per student revenue cap increase and expenditures increase at three-point-five percent each year. With the current inflationary rate, I mean, people could argue or debate whether that's an accurate projection, we feel it's a our best guess, I don't know. Hopefully, inflation comes down and that deficit's not as, as high. Hopefully, our per pupil revenue cap increases, and that's not as high, but there hasn't been a lot to give us confidence over that. When I've spoken to another area legislator, and I asked him, you know, since you froze it for two years, do you think we'll be looking at like a six hundred dollar, and, and to mention that we have a record state budget surplus, could we expect a six hundred dollar per pupil increase to make up for the two years we didn't get anything? And he said, to be frank, in my caucus, I have people that would, their, their starting point is zero dollars. And he said, I, I, it makes sense, it sounds fair, but I wouldn't count on that. Looking at our per pupil spending, and I think a lot of people in Elkhorn, and I know surrounding districts are shocked when they, they find this out, but the Elkhorn area school districts is amongst the bottom ten districts in the state of eight, twelve school districts on spending per pupil. And that's four hundred and sixty-plus school districts roughly in the state, and the amount that we spend per pupil is in that very bottom tier. Um, I just spoke to a school board member a few weeks ago from a neighboring district that wanted to know about a, a staff member, and was inquiring, you know, the process on that, but it mentioned, yeah, um, we don't have monies like you do in Elkhorn to pay the staff, so we are curious. And, and I thought, it, it blew me away that that school board, you know, member, they had no idea, they get five thousand dollars per pupil more than we have a year. Uh, but they refer to us as the rich district, and all you guys, you know, we don't have money like your rich school districts. We're in a, every single one of those school districts have substantially more money per pupil than we do. Even if what's going to be proposed were to be passed, which would account to approximately a thousand dollars, seven hundred, one thousand seven hundred fifty dollar increase on the per pupil spending increase, that would still put us well below the state average on the per pupil spending increase, and one of the lowest in the year. Uh, and I, I wanna point out, that's of the current state average, this doesn't account for the ninety-plus referendums that were passed in the fall, those that will go in the spring, and what the revenue limit increase will be next year, which would all be factored into that, uh, state average. So, what's the process or this discussion? Again, we started looking at this back when that first budget was, was passed, and we saw that, we knew that there was gonna be a fiscal cliff there. Um, we knew that the, um, stimulus funds would be able to backfill that budget for us. And there was a wide variety in, in what different school districts received, to be frank, we didn't receive as much as other districts. So, there is an impact on, um, when people will run out of those monies. They do all have to be expended by, is it?
September twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Twenty-four. Um, but, you know, it was wildly different, I believe, Bill, I, was it three hundred and something? What was our total that we received, roughly?
Well, in terms of all the dollars, it was, was about four-point-four million dollars, so it was about eleven or twelve hundred dollars per student, if you look at it from that perspective. Districts across the state, they averaged about twenty-five hundred per student, and because the distribution was based on what they call the Title I formula, which is the federal formula, um, some districts received a lot more, for example, the largest district in the state, MPS, received over twelve thousand dollars per student. And that, that's probably equal to their annual budget. In, in terms of federal dollars, so.
Yeah, and they were closed.
Yeah, they were closed the entire time they were open.
Yeah.
So, we knew the, so we began those discussions related to the fiscal cliff and started having those. I think something that, um, we looked at it closely at that board budget in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, I think at that point, we, we still felt, and from that election cycle, that we, you know, I think it was optimistic and hoping that we could wait and see what the state came back on the by Indian budget, and then go the, the following, um, year. Um, unfortunately, you know, in looking at that, in that deficit timeframe, it kind of puts us in a situation where we only have two election cycles coming up, because we didn't go this fast fall, but there's the one in the spring. There's no fall election cycle next year, so it would put you in the following spring and/or the following fall. Our preference, or my general preference, was always to go in a general election if possible, if you can see what's in, you're ready for that, in a referendum, just because you get much greater voter representation and turnout. And turnout to the demographics that are related to the parents, I think gives you the greatest cross-section. Overwhelming data also shows that school referendums are much more successful in a general election period rather than a off-cycle when the voter turnout's less. So, the question that is for the school board to consider, um, this evening, is shall the school district of Elkhorn, Walworth County, Wisconsin, be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in section one twenty-one point nine-one of Wisconsin statutes by six million five hundred thousand dollars, beginning with the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year for recurring purposes consisting of expenses related to maintaining current instructional programs, and class sizes, staffing, ongoing safety and facility maintenance, and additional resources for a four-year-old kindergarten program. Couple of items that may come up, and, and we have an entire, what page, let's, the real launch, um, if the school board does vote to move forward with that, with what we feel would be common referendum questions, but just a couple that are probably at the forefront of, uh, or the most common, is why reoccurring? There's two types of, um, exceeding the revenue cap referendums you can do. You can do a recurring referendum or a non-reoccurring. Non-reoccurring is a certain dollar amount for a specified number of years. I've seen those, you know, oftentimes you'll see five years, you know, eight years. See, it goes high, I believe, we're seeing this forty years or twenty years, there's not a limit on how many years you can do a non-reoccurring referendum. And you can step those or structure those in any way you want, but at that date, they do end. A recurring raises that revenue cap, and it stays at that raised level. Now, if the financial picture or the budgetary picture changes, it doesn't obligate a school board to levy up to that level, it just gives that cap that the school board is authorized to go up to. The reason why the recommendations to do the recurring referendum is if there was, um, to be frank, I hate to sound pessimistic, but there's no projected source of funding that's going to close the, the gaps that exist in that budgetary shortfall. And where we're already at in those, the very bottom of spending per pupil, um, in the state of Wisconsin, looking at closing that gap, no matter what the state does, it doesn't put us in a likely picture that that source would no longer be needed. Now, if we were a declining enrollment district, and we were losing fifty kids a year or a hundred kids a year, I could probably come back and say, yeah, I don't think we would need this referendum to go on on a recurring basis, because we could look at staffing adjustments or cuts, but we've been in a um, headcount growth for some time, and a very stable resident district population as well, and birth rate indications are the COVID years, maybe that next baby, um, boom. Uh, as we witnessed ourselves in the last year with thirty-plus paternity, it's a significant baby that we're putting down the road. So, that is different for some districts. If you are a district in a declining enrollment where you projected a budget reduction, a non-reoccurring would make a lot of sense, and we've seen some of our neighbors in that situation that have done non-recurring referendums, because they have a source to reduce the budget as they move forward. Uh, what will the referendum be used for? Maintaining current instructional programs, class sizes, staffing, ongoing safety and facility maintenance, providing additional resources for the four-year-old kindergarten program. This is something the, the school board's been discussing since, you know, ten years ago, looking at that four-year-old kindergarten program. When it was created, uh, it was put in as that public-private partnership, which is a common structure, and some of those partnerships, you know, I don't know what the exact breakdown is, but you just contribute a certain dollar amount to those private daycare centers, and they hire the teachers and all the staff and, and do that funding. Um, this would shift the model to where they're still housed, we don't have space to put them into the, bring them into the building, and it would be a substantial greater cost to take over all staffing of that four- And it would be a substantial greater cost to take over all staffing of that 4K. But this would allow us to transition the 4K, current 4K teachers who are employees of the daycare centers into the district employees and put them on the district employee salary schedule and pay schedule, which is higher than where they're currently at. It would put them on a more competitive wage. It would, um, bring stability in the sense that the, the turnover rate we would anticipate would go down from what it currently is. It would also leave some resources with the 4K centers for them to stay at a competitive wage level for their other support staff that service the 4Ks. So that's where the tie-in is into the 4K. We haven't been able to fit that into our budget for the past 10 years as we've been trying to close those other shortfall gaps. It's, uh, in looking at it, $500,000 will cover that expense for us to do that. The other significant question is what is the estimated tax impact? Now, when we look at this, this is a worst case scenario. Uh, what we're factoring in is a property in equalized value increasing 3% in 2023 and 2% in '24 and '25. Um, I think the property values have slowed down and they're rising, they're inclined. The state funding formula, it's, we don't know what we're going to get in from the state from a year-to-year basis. A lot of it depends on how your property value does compared to the rest of the state, whether that goes up and, uh, up and down. This also doesn't take into account any property tax relief that the state legislature would put into, um, any school funding. And in my experience, the state legislature very rarely increases revenue limits without providing an equal or similar amount to reduce property taxes. So all that being said, that impact will be stepped in over the three-year period, but ultimately by that '25, '26 year, it would be a total of $215,000 for $100,000 of property value. And again, we know you can't purchase a home for $100,000. That's just to make it easy to multiply based on whatever the property value is. Someone could estimate what that dollar impact would be. This chart down below is a chart of the mill rates, which is the amount of, um, tax that is paid associated for every $1,000 of property value. You can see in 2017, 18, that mill rate was at 9.86. At the end of this, with, um, when it's fully stepped in and there's, um, from the referendum impact, we'd be looking at what we're estimating a 9.26% mill rate. When you look at this, um, chart, you can see that the, um, purple amount is our general fund. This is our regular operational, um, dollars and, and that impact that it has on the, the tax rate without this additional dollar amount being added on. The yellow section is what's called our debt service. Those are the bonds or the referendums that have been passed by the community and the amount of our budget that goes to pay those debts back. You'll see that yellow band getting narrower as that debt has been paid down and/or the, the middle school has been paid off. The red line is what's called our community service fund. Those are, are, we have a handful of unique positions, um, like our parent connections coordinator, our, um, grant writer that was added this year. Those are a completely separate fund that, um, is through our, our Fund 80. It doesn't have, we can't use those funds to pay for people in general operation. It has to go for services provided to the community. It's also used to help operate facilities that are used by the community. And so we do have some offsets for like when the agility center's being used by the community or the auditorium or those other areas, those are self-sufficient through that Fund 80. But that fund can only be increased in order to provide greater community service. And you can't reduce it and then ship the money somewhere else. But that's how it all impacts within that overall budget. That's what that overall tax impact is that we would be looking at. And, um, that's the question. Any questions related to?
Well, I think the, uh, presentation that was in the, uh, beginning of the meeting by the resident, uh, expressed a lot of concerns that I've been hearing a lot. I've been called quite a bit in the last couple of days. And if you could go back to the slide of lack of state funding, I can, I can already assure you, just hearing that, that, uh, presentation, uh, there's going to be more people that are going to be building off of, um, the slides that we have here, and I just want to be prepared to try to, uh, explain it. Not that slide, another slide before that. It had just a purple line and a gold line. There you go. If you look at the gold line, it basically shows that the deficit or projected budget deficit at that point, the balance, is minus $7,176,446. With that being known, and then us asking 6.5 million, um, each, each year building up to that, um, how is that going to balance out? Um, for that? And just knowing from the conversations I had, that reoccurring statement question, uh, that we have proposed for the, uh, referendum question is one that comes up continually. Um, and after hearing so many in the community expressing that to me, in good conscience, I understand the balancing of the budget, but I also look at, we have to revisit it at some point. We can't just open the can and let it keep going. In good conscience, I can't, uh, present that referendum question as a reoccurring. I would like to see us modify that and have discussion about borrowing 19.5 million, because that's a six and a half, six and a half, six and a half, through the '25, '26 school year. Um, and then reevaluate, rebalance, recalculate, refigure, and then talk amongst the, the, um, the, um, the school district and the community again. But, uh, the biggest opposition I, I, I'm hearing, and, and pretty heavily, is the opening the public trough for eternity. So I just expressed that and we can deal with it anyway, uh, moving forward from there. But I wanted to make sure that also was clearly expressed.
Paul, you said borrow, but you mean non-recurring for six and a half or the next three years?
Right, yeah. The, basically, uh, get the, the community to agree to the 19.5 million, which is three years of $6.5 million at the referendum. Apply that, balance it, work with it, and at the end of the '25, '26 school year, um, see where we truly are at, at that point. Uh, show them due diligence in our perceived cost containments as we best could present them. And then if we have to, uh, tap them on the shoulder again and say, okay, now let's look at the picture again. But the biggest concern I have being expressed, um, with phone calls is the reoccurring. And I, I understand where we're coming from as well, but I also know that we want to, uh, move on because it's in the spring or it's next spring. So if we can heal this wound early, uh, the better it will be.
And Paul, you understand that those dollar amounts are a projected deficit? It's not what the, um, fund balance would be in those years? That would just be the projected deficit for those years?
Right. And then the question's going to come up on the, and, and I understand we want to keep that, that, that fund balance as high as possible because of the other incurred penalties that we have. Uh, but once they realize that your fund 10 balance is where it is as well, that's going to brew a little bit into the community as well. And take it for what it is, but I'm just expressing all the commentary I've been handling recently. Because just like the Packers, you go into the game wanting to win. Uh, it doesn't necessarily mean you will.
Have you gotten any feedback, Paul, on, um, doing like the graduated that we talked about like last week about different dollar amounts each year? To get to that money, you know, to a 19.5 or?
Um, actually, the, 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 uh, commentary that was, was best was, I would rather know upfront that my, my expenses would be 19.5 million rather than just, uh, have it at six and a half and six and a half and six and a half and continuum. That, that's basically the, the feel. They would rather pay the 19.5 right up front and then let the district handle it the best they can and then show due diligence. And then where are we at the end of the '25, '26 school year? Revisit it, uh, look at it again than to go the direction we are kind of looking at right now.
Paul, um, all the respect, I, just to clarify, because it doesn't, nobody would want to pay 19.5 million upfront. That tax impact would be over $645 from the first year and, and we don't need 19.5 to.
But then we, but then we can just state it as 6.5 million for the years '22, '23, or '23, '24 through '25, '26. So it would show as $6.5 million for those three years.
Other thoughts, questions in the presentation?
So really, he's just asking for 6.5 million per year, non-recurring, non-recurring?
Through '25, '26, correct.
Maybe we should focus on the presentation if there's any clarification and then discussion will be more appropriate when it comes to the, if someone makes a motion related to the.
Okay.
Uh, question to discuss at that point. Are there any other questions on that presentation?
No, I think the presentation outlined it very, very well.
I think this is the point where we, uh, we'll share the, uh, discussion.
I mean, we're, we're going to evaluate it every year anyway on how much we need to.
Right.
You know, go into that six and a half.
Clearly, the first year, we don't need 6.5 million.
Correct.
Right.
We'll take what we, what we truly need. And so for me, it's just, you don't go, it goes non-recurring. We're just going to have to go referendum three years. That's what.
Correct.
That's what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't anticipate the state changing there too. And they like their big budget, you know, surround us now and they're never going to, they're never going to get that up again.
And just to clarify, non-recurring can be any year amount that you want or set. I think three years may have just got brought up as an idea because that's what our chart was on our focus.
Built in, Phil, comfortable.
Yeah, three years is not a common non-recurring timeframe because it's a lot of work and.
Yes, right.
Time and, um, things usually don't get resolved within that timeframe. Five years or more is, is more difficult on a non-recurring.
And, and 6.5 is the maximum.
Correct.
It could also be two.
Yes, the board would vote, um, at an annual basis, what to go up to for the budget. It only, it just gives the scriptability to.
Paul, what do you think about the five-year tariff versus three?
Yeah, I, I, I could be comfortable with that. Like I said, I'm just addressing the concerns that have been expressed about the reoccurring. But I, I, if we show a definitive window that we are going to really be diligent, I think we can embrace a lot of those doubts and fears that are out there. And, and then re-express that the 6.5 is the maximum. That not necessarily are we going to tap into the entire thing, but those are the assurances I think much of the community is looking for.
Let us word it that way.
We can share it in the, the presentation, but we tried to put the question up too.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
By state statute, we just weren't allowed to put that in. But certainly in the, I really, my job as superintendent is simply to provide the answers. This is what we're looking at and answer those questions. And let them know that here's what we're looking at. So, you know, sharing that information and making sure that people are well informed. And, you know, the rules of the school board, you have a little bit more leeway that we'll share at the end of the meeting, but really, again, it's just to put forward the question to the community and what are they, how do they want us to resolve this? And, you know, then they get to vote on it, but.
I think I'd rather know upfront if people don't want, if the community doesn't support it. That's okay, but I'd like to know that upfront to make the changes now instead of waiting five years with the greater funds in budget and then have it be a more significant issue. I mean, we're just going to be back. I mean, I don't, I just don't see how, the, the state's not going to change. They're not going to, they're not going to increase the budgets to the school districts in that timeframe. So, I mean, it's really ultimately just a question and that's what we said. That's what I said. It's a question for the community. How do you want us to address the issue? It's not, and, and I would encourage anyone who says that we have mismanaged the bonds that I'm in and look through the budget and you can tell me where that happened.
Yeah.
Because.
Jason, in your presentation with the staff, I think one thing that's not in that presentation, but you stated was that there's only 13 school districts in the entire state that have not gone to referendum.
That had not gone to a referendum to exceed the revenue.
Right, right, right. And we're one of the 13?
No, we, we technically, when we did our prior two referendums, um, we had a, with the building expansion, we put in a small revenue cap.
Got it.
Referendum, one was $200,000 and one was $300,000 to cover the staffing cost, the building maintenance and operation costs of those buildings.
Yep.
So that was already built into the budget. So we have historically, yes, two recurring referendums for a total of $500,000.
Yeah, which is. I think it's a time to drop the pocket.
And going to a, a five-year, a, another thing I would be hopeful for is not only in the presentation of the referendum and getting the community to understand that, after the referendum goes through, that we can, uh, embrace the community members to get involved, to talk to the state leadership about funding public education and getting them to get aggressive with phone calls and emails and things like that. So hopefully, the formula does change in the future. Um, and, and I think that statewide, not just Elkhorn, I think we have to really get that going and promote that amongst the citizens to get the state legislator to look at, here's the crisis. It's not like three districts are in this situation. Look at how many, that tells you there's a problem. When there's an illness out there, you have to look for a solution. And I think we pass it back to them to make them in earnest look at assisting and finding answers as well. And, and I know where the political environment has been, where they basically cast aside and said, well, every locale can take care of their own. Well, I think it's time all locals get together and tell them, no, it's we, the people, remember that. Now let's start working together. That's where I'm coming from and that's what I'm hearing from the, the dialogue I had about the concern about the reoccurring, um, because then they aren't going to get active and involved. And, um, if everybody takes care of their own problem, then there's no reason for the physician to step in and try to find a cure as well.
I understand the concerns with the reoccurring. I told, I told them.
Yeah. You've been with 10 years.
I mean, I, I understand it, it's just.
In perpetuity.
I think we're, I think it's going to, I'd rather know now, you know, and, and certainly if we're going to do a, a non-recurring, then I think we need to take out the four-year kindergarten so we can go back to the 6 million. Because I would hate to bring those employees over to the district.
Three years, yeah.
And file out that we can always do that again. So I, I wouldn't want to do anything.
That's not.
That's not going to be sustainable, you know, long-term. Because I don't wanna get anybody in a position where then
I understand that sentiment, if, if the board did move to the non-recurring, I would, I would still leave that in there. It does just create a, it creates that cycle. Paul, I, I have to say, I like the point that you made from the standpoint that perhaps that gets greater engagement because I've spoken with friends who are very involved in, you know, their Republican Party and friends with the legislators who were shocked to find out that schools were given a zero-dollar revenue limit increase for two years and that they had no idea. And I get it, because school funding is complicated, it's not that they didn't, they, they put in hundreds of millions of dollars to, what they call school aides or to bill permanently on the term to lower the local revenue limit, which everybody wants, nobody wants to pay higher property taxes. And so they can say, we put in record dollar amounts to fund schools. When in reality, the schools got zero dollars to increase the budget to help with operation, but it reduced potentially the local tax levy because it gained more state funding to schools. So they can give more state funding to schools without increasing the school budget by a single dollar. And that's confusing.
And that was one of the, the conversations that took place was, so the state gave me a tax break on my property bill, but then the tax rate for the schools went up, so the two hundred dollars I got back from the state and they were bragging about how they assisted me, just shifted hands and went right back out. So I didn't gain anything as they're talking. And hopefully, we can get those same people to talk to the politicians and get them to understand that it was just a, a shift. It, it didn't help the citizens themselves. It was just a transfer of drawers, uh, where the money went from and to. But I, I would like, you know, to help the citizens with, uh, the panic of reoccurring, uh, reduce that and, and I'd be fine with five years. Um, I know some of them are really panicked about that portion of the, the possible referendum. Um, but then try to really engage them into, uh, more dialogue so that others understand as well that have more control.
I would still go out, I would still, if we're gonna do the non-recurring, I would still go. And I'm not trying to, you know, it was suggested that, and I'm not attacking anybody in the end, I'm just saying, it was suggested that we were using that to sell the, to sell the referendum, certainly not, it's just something that we've looked at the last, that's been on our radar for the last ten years, especially, you know,
Right.
me in particular for ten years, that I've said, okay, I don't like that the four K teachers are not um, just employees because we have really no control over who they are.
Right, because families leave. I left for years, for nine years, I didn't have my kids on board.
The quality of them, they're just, I mean, they're hired by somebody else. And that, that's, that's not to say that they're bad teachers or anything like that, it's just we would have more likely for attracting higher quality four K teachers, well, I guess. And whether or not that's something people want, I, you know, like what everybody's thinking, no, certainly not, but it's been something that we talked about. If, you know, it's never gonna, it's not gonna, unless we do it in a referendum, it's not gonna, it's just not gonna happen. And that was the discussion that we had. And when I brought it up, it wasn't necessarily that I wanted to throw it out, that I was saying, I brought it up as, okay,
Touch that figures. Right.
We can mis-maintain the status quo for, you know, with this, or if we wanted to do more things, like reduce class sizes or bring the four K teachers on, then we would need to ask for additional revenues to do that because we just don't have five hundred thousand dollars to pull from somewhere. Could we do it? Yeah, yeah, I guess we could, but it would be at the expense of something else. And there's always pluses and minuses to, to those type of decisions, it's gonna hurt somebody, no matter what we do. I don't wanna cut teachers, I don't wanna, I have a kid, I have a kid daughter in the school district, do I wanna cut teachers? Hell, heck no. You know, I have nieces and nephews in the school district, do I wanna cut teachers? No. But ultimately, even eighty percent of the budget is salary and benefits, it's gonna come from somewhere in salary and benefits.
Right.
And, I would hope that we could figure out some way of doing it, and we will, if that's what the district, if, if that's what the residents say, that, that we don't wanna do this, we don't wanna have a referendum, we don't wanna pay more taxes, that's certainly okay, but, but we were just trying to show you, okay, well, then five percent per year negative is where we're gonna be. And we'll make those decisions when it comes.
Right.
Where those come from?
You can't
We'll have to make that, I can't
You can't make up six million dollars over
Yeah, I can't
The other twenty percent of the budget.
I can't say what we're gonna, you know, like, well, we're gonna exactly do this, nor do I really wanna say that because it'd be pretty negative to just go out and say, we're gonna cut these people on this person, this, you know, this, anybody wanna hear that? No. And we don't wanna lose employees, I mean, it's hard to get employees these days.
Yeah.
And I run a business, I understand it. It's the, in the public sector, in the private se, in the private sector, I mean, the wages are all over the board, I it's hard to find people, you're, you're throwing numbers at people that you would never throw at people before, just are. To get, there's just a limited number. And we want the best teachers, we want the best employees for Elkhorn, right, for our kids. We don't want them to go over to Delavan because Delavan gets eighteen thousand or over to Lake Geneva because they get, I don't remember what it is, so they can pay more. I I wish I had a great answer where I said, well, it doesn't cost more, but we can, we can do more. We've, we've tried that for years. We're one, like we said, we're one of the lowest spending districts in the state of Wisconsin for a K-12. But one of the highest performing.
We're huge open enrollment.
When I look at, I mean, yeah, it's huge open enrollment.
I think once we, I think once we drop salaries, once we drop, or do all the things that we're gonna have to do to make budget in two years, it, it scares me that I won't be on this board, knowing like what we've done to be so strategic with that budget and honestly, what Jason Taluk has done to CCA the Korean College Academy
It's still
and, and options.
I shudder to think where we would be had we, had we not had those.
Exist.
Exactly.
And open enrollment will drop and plummet and then we're gonna be, not, I mean, the numbers that we saw that we're gonna be in the deficit is gonna be
It's gonna be, it's gonna be twenty million.
Yeah.
And, and I, I shudder to think of the fact that you could be twenty-three years in a row of six point five billion.
No, you can't, it'll keep going.
Reoccurring.
Yeah, it'll keep, I mean, but it's, it's going to affect the opportunities that we give our students and
Delavan question, Kevin, is, is it gonna, if we go, if we, if we do a, a limited one, is the six point five million not gonna be needed in X amount of years?
In eleven years, if we only do ten. No, yeah.
But we can't predict how it's gonna be.
Yeah, don't, it's, that's the scary part, it's that
Well, there's the case for why it needs to stay, it needs to change state level.
Sure, it needs to change the state level. But, but I don't know that it's going to because when you, when you look at, it's kind of an untouchable subject from both sides of the political aisle, I mean, who wants to touch that? Because you've got some districts that are getting huge amounts of money, right? MPS or, or, I mean, just use an example because they're easy to throw, throw at.
Yeah.
But, so they've got this huge budget. Who's gonna wanna say, okay, we're gonna take all the school districts and we're gonna give you the exact same amount of money?
Mm-hmm.
And just change it right now. I mean, it, it was easier in nineteen ninety-three to say, okay, all these districts are spending this amount of money, we're gonna, we're gonna freeze you there and then we're gonna give you a CPI adjustment because it didn't really affect anybody, right? Everybody had that amount of money budgeted and then you got the CPI adjustment above that. Didn't affect you all that much, really, as long as you stayed with the same amount of spending, you know, you didn't, it didn't allow you to increase. But it kept districts like us low. And we never were able to catch up to where those other school districts are. Now, who's gonna take that back and say, okay, Milwaukee, you have to
You mismanaged it.
The average, you have to come to the average. And this district in, you know, Toma, Wisconsin, or Elkhorn, Wisconsin, or wherever, you get, you know, more now. I mean, who's gonna touch that? Because everybody represents different areas in the state and it's gonna affect them all differently.
Correct.
So everybody's gonna be either on the good side of that or the bad side, much like open enrollment. You know, you're either on the good side of open enrollment or you're on the bad side where you're losing students. And it affects everybody differently. Now, again, the question is, do we see in the future that, you know, we're gonna have the, I mean, I understand it though, I understand limiting it X amount of years, but I think we're gonna be back, I really do, I, I think we can do that.
I think I agree with you, we definitely will be back, but we can demonstrate to the public that in year one, we could have had six and a half, we only spent two point two, we had three, we spent this. I mean, it's hard to
And I just, the only thing I said, you know, I mean, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with limiting that, to be honest. But I would like to remove anything where it's like, we're gonna increase, you know, we're gonna do more. I don't, I don't wanna do that. I just don't. And that's just me, I mean, that might be, and Jason said that he's not worried about it, but
I, I just, I just would feel awful for, so I have had conversations with the directors to give them a heads up that this is what we're gonna look at, I didn't wanna cause panic that we were going to, you know, look at bringing it completely in-house and putting them out there from the daycare center standpoints, I can tell you one director said, oh, the four K has been such a blessing to us to have because prior to that four K coming in, I didn't even have a, a paycheck for the most part. And it's not that they're not making exorbitant dollars, the teachers would be their highest paid employee in those centers and we know how the daycare shortage is there, so I, I think it would be a win-win from that circumstance. And I, I think I've probably been for the past ten years, whenever I've talked about referendum, and I said this in my superintendent meetings, that um, I think it's foolish to do a non-recurring referendum when you know that budgetary gap is there. But Paul, I'll give you a lot of credit, that last statement that you made in regards to giving time to educate, to work with multiple legislators, to keep people, get people more engaged and hearing that, I think it's really important, the whatever the school board decides to do, that it's a unanimous consensus on that, I think that's important. And if, um, we're hearing strongly from a couple that there's greater comfort in a non-recurring, you give time, then I, I would be comfortable with a five-year projection, that gives time to try to make some waves with state legislature and so forth. And who knows, maybe, maybe some headway can be made because what I can tell you, the school finance is gonna be thrown on its head because the inequity around the state, the winners and losers is just gonna be completely exacerbated. And to give you an example, we're already in the bottom on funding per pupil in the state. But you look at like, and we all know Dane County is a different region. But when you've got Verona, which isn't double our size, not even close to double our size, passing a nineteen point one million dollar recurring referendum. Or Oregon, who is our size, and there are already thousands of students or thousands of dollars per pupil greater than us, and Oregon, who passes nine million, yeah.
No, eleven million reoccurring.
Oh, Oregon, Oregon, eleven million reoccurring, which is they're our size and their funding per pupil is already greater than ours.
Eleven point four.
That gap just gets further and further and further. And the state's going to have to address it, otherwise conservative leaning or um, counties and school districts are just financially going to get further and further behind in those gaps because it's harder to pass referendums typically in some of those um, areas. Not that they're not supportive, we've seen a very supportive community. But we are also in a region where some of the districts did recurring referendums, Lake Geneva, I believe, those were recurring, but we've also seen some non-recurring in our area that were passed and or planning to go to it for the very reason it was discussed more out of the concern over whether or not the community could get behind that being referring. But I think, Paul, your point on maybe getting some engagement and if people are more comfortable with that, um, then I could see that if you can get to a board consensus around that aspect, at least a five-year or five-year plus would give us time to work with the state and see if there's some institutional changes, that gives us two budget cycles to go through, so it gives a little bit of time on that rather than just one budget cycle.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you for recognizing that and I'm trying to be as transparent with the communications, uh, with those people. A, a, and I, as difficult as it is, I'm, I'm also very hopeful. And, and I, I think we can address both, uh, positions uh, by doing a, a, a five-year or whatever and then work while we're achieving that and getting the engagement with the, the state politicians, it, it has to come. I mean, the ill is so great right now and it's only gonna worsen unless it changes. So if we can get community involved there as well, not just Elkhorn, but statewide about public education, not that it'll be, we get the benefit from Milwaukee losing half of theirs and balancing it all out, but I think we can adjust it so, or get them to look at it to adjust reasonably so everybody supports all the children to the best ability we can.
So I think we're still waiting for, I don't know if anyone's prepared to do a motion.
So where is everybody at on the four K? You hear that?
I'll pull it out. Are we, are we changing it to a
Non-recurring.
Non-recurring. I would take it out.
Just a comment, if, if you're gonna change the wording or change the intent of how it was placed in the agenda, you cannot take action tonight.
Oh. Oh, so that totally fills our timing off.
Well, that's for this evening. We, we were coming, the, the county clerk would really like, if we were gonna change the wording from this, I would recommend we look at doing another meeting, yeah, next Monday.
Can we just call a special meeting in another night?
We could do the following, but, yeah, we could do a quick one the following night, doesn't, no, we gotta give a twenty-four hour notice.
Yeah.
Um, this wouldn't be considered an emergency. So we need to give enough notice, Paul, but we could look at something like Wednesday or Thursday night.
Okay, you know, I was saying, let's look at, as, as soon as we can readdress it, let's try to get something on, on the agenda for that.
I personally would love to keep the four K in it because I know once families leave, it's hard, they build relationships elsewhere, it's hard to come back. I never, I built a house to have my kids at Titties and I didn't go to Titties at all with my oldest because he fell in love with his teacher and fell in love with his class and it took us nine years to come back. And once I came and I grew to love Elkhorn and grew to love the school and the district, I regretted the fact that we never came back and tried it out, but it came down to the four K. So I think, I think we're gonna have a lot of young families, um, looking elsewhere for education.
Well, I mean, potentially we can get more four K students if some of you decide to date. Now that they're doing this, I wanna get in, into that business.
But it's, yes. I don't know, I just would hate to get, to bring them in.
No, I understand, like, you don't wanna bring them in and then say
That's my way.
I completely understand, right. And that's, that's the problem with the non-recurring.
No, it does create a additional obligation that you need to be able to meet in five years, it wouldn't reduce that amount. But it would give us five years of relief having that, that turnover, that inequity in compensation day and I think it would be a step in the right direction there. And it would build into that budget that this is where we're operating and we need to figure out how to make that work.
How many families are we losing?
Um, it's, four K is unique because it, it is by far our highest number of open enrolled out, but a lot of it does get based on daycare and referendum care. And so it is also the one great level, while there are cases like what Mrs. Ray expressed where they left, they love where they're at, they kept them there. The vast, I don't wanna say the vast majority, but a significant portion of those come back to the district the following year now that it's totally programmed. So a lot has to do with uh, daycare insurance. But there are two neighboring school districts that purposely established and they get the bullet to put in full day four K just to provide a full hoping that what Mrs. Ray expressed would happen. that what Mrs. Ray expressed would happen.
I never meant to say, I'll be honest. I mean, we were shocked that we did. But once you fall in love with where you are, it's hard to, it's hard to uproot your family and your kids. And I wish, um, I get it, but I wish we, we had that here. And um, I just see the opportunities, the further the kids are in Elkhorn. And um, it's an amazing thing. And I'm constantly getting questions about open enrollment and constantly giving out Sarah Stone's number for options. And it is like on speed dial right now because other districts just do not give the opportunities of options. Alright.
So what are we saying? We're saying we're gonna, we're gonna change it. So is that what we're making, your majority?
Does that mean we can't, I think, we just have to table it until we do it?
You could do a motion. We could lay out what you'd like the resolution to be. We could approve that from the board. We would have to take the, the language back, have it rewritten again, do another motion to finalize.
Basically, we would have to go through the same process at different dates.
But I guess, yeah. But I'd like to have that pinned down so that you know tonight that if you go to Corals and Brady, here's what. And then that meeting can just be a null.
Yep.
Does anybody else wanna drop 4K besides? Sorry, it sounds bad. Like, I, I've gone both ways on it. And I understand, like, I don't wanna make, I won't be on the board five years from now, so I don't wanna put a priority in. Right. No, no, but I get it. Like, we've always had that conversation of being so responsible, you know. Financially, that was new board member comes that understands.
I think it would be on the side of dropping 4K if it's not the same.
Me too. So can I make a draft motion? A draft resolution or whatever, so that we have.
Three. Paul, what, what do you feel about 4K?
Um, I have mixed feelings actually because I, I, I think if we show them that we used whatever money up to the six point five and we embraced the 4K, which held those families um, in our district. I think that would also be a, a springboard into assisting as we move forward. However, I don't want to incur that um, with no assurance. And there's no such thing as assurance right now. So I can go either way with it, uh, but I, I, I know that's a critical thing. And, and boy, if, if it could work out, that would be great. But I also understand that it's a a shaky area. But I, I, I could go either way with it. If it's in there, I can support it. If we have to remove it because we see it being too detrimental, I could live with that as well.
An option that we can do, because knowing that if that's something the board's taking out on a conscientious basis because it's not a reoccurring, there's nothing that would prevent the school district from spending more time on that and doing that as a separate question next spring or at any time. And just look at it as that one initiative. You know, put that out there too, is that supported by the community as an isolated portion of the budget. I, I wouldn't run it at the same time. I would spend more time doing the homework on it and looking at the down the road.
Yeah, I would look at it more closely as to if we wanna do it, we should do it now. Because I think the, the black eye we would get if we went to six million now and tried to get the, the referendum this spring and then came back next spring to ask for an extra five hundred thousand because we, we support this so greatly, I don't think that would look good on us. So I think we have to make a decision as to if we want it, let's do it now. Or we drop it and we can't look at next spring. Maybe in the future, we can, we can bring it back. But I wouldn't bring it that quickly.
No, I wouldn't either. That's, that's, I wouldn't. It's either now or maybe the next time.
You could put it on as a second question as a recurring dollar, no? Nothing that says you only have one question. You can separate it out and put it on as a recurring. If that's the stumbling block.
I actually like that.
Yeah, and I, I can support that too. Is say, you know, let's, let's, can we have two sw- questions on there? One would be for the five-year up to six million dollars. And then a second one would be and a five hundred thousand. And I could even have that as a reoccurring one for that specifically for the 4K. Because then the, the community then has their voice to accept or deny either, either position.
Yeah. Yes, you can do it as two separate questions.
How do people feel on that?
I'd be, we're okay with that. I'm okay with that.
It, it has to be two separate questions because you can't build a portion reoccurring and.
Correct. Correct. And then again, as long as we're thorough enough when we express what those questions truly mean to the community that's in question and they truly understand it, hopefully they'll vote the way we hope they vote.
We don't feel like a such decision. We have one, one vote, just like everybody else.
Right.
So is there anyone, if we were to go back to Corals and Brady and ask them to put together a six million dollar on a non-recurring basis for the next five years? It sounds like there's a strong consensus from the school board to put that together. And a five hundred thousand dollar reoccurring to provide the funding related to the 4K absorption of the teachers as district staff.
Yes.
I'm in support. Yes.
Alright. And then I think this would be tabled then until that next, I guess we can look at calendars really quick. Is there also a consensus that are, are you wanting to look? Tuesday would be out. Wednesday would be the next possible date. Wednesday or Thursday? Is everyone available Thursday?
I'm available Thursday.
Yes.
At what time? Six?
Six o'clock.
Could you meet on Monday, Jason? A week from today?
I can meet on Monday. Like, some expressed.
No.
That's right. Is that? Sorry, I don't have a school calendar.
Yeah, like.
There is smart students or.
Students.
We have a service second.
The only reason I suggest that is it would give the board one more opportunity. If there's something in the question that you decide at that meeting that you wanna change, you could still do it and have your regular meeting on the twenty-third.
But that's why I like meeting Thursday.
Right.
Because if something comes up, we still, it just gives us more time. Yeah, we're talking this.
Yeah, this, this.
Oh, this Thursday.
That's what I was asking.
We're talking like, in my.
Three days.
Thursday to twelfth.
This one, ask me if you have enough time there. Because it has to go through review.
So. I'm just kinda, I'm just kinda rolling this out. So when we looked at this last week, we looked at a lot of different scenarios with recurring and non-recurring. And when we decided to go to recurring, that's when we said it's, it would be better just to do the same amount each year. But when we were looking at non-recurring, we were looking at phasing in that dollar amount. So that the impact wasn't. But it also complicates the question.
A lot.
We can always phase it ourselves.
Well, yeah. And I guess, but then we're, we have to somehow communicate to the public that we're looking at phasing in.
You understand that?
Yeah.
But it's really doesn't change our language other than it's not going to, because we already have it as part of the communication.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're still on the same page.
No, you're right. We have those sample questions.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
That's too con- I.
I agree. It's too complicated on the question.
Yeah. I try to make this clear as possible.
We just have to self, self, we just would self-regulate on that.
Alright. So Thursday, six o'clock, we'll do the board meeting. And if something comes up and we talk to Corals and Brady tomorrow and they're like, yeah, there's no way we can do that, then we'll get a message out before we have to schedule it.
But the sixteenth work for the board, you just didn't know that upfront?
Justin came.
Good for me.
Yeah, it works for me.
Sixteen as a backup. Then like that, I think the next item could be tabled.
Yeah.
In the agenda? Alright.
I just have a more agenda.
I, I'm like, ready to like, close it.
Hey, we do have to establish in January, our spaces available for open enrollment um, purposes per board policy. The maximum class size for all non-special education programs is listed as follows. So the way this works, when a student open rolls into the school district, they are applying to the district. They can put down a preference of where they would like to go. But if the class sizes are at that level and there's no space, then we let the parents know that, you know, there's not an open seat there. And we offer them where there is an open seat. Um, it is hard to project and sometimes the shifting and moving takes place in August because you don't know who's gonna show up, who's not. There is a, a regular turnover of families who sell their homes, move and so forth. Uh, but we, we have a relatively, compared to the state average, low turnover rate amongst students. Some districts, it's a much higher transient rate. Um, but these are the numbers. We are nowhere near on an average basis to those numbers. There are pockets or class here or there that may hit that number or even be a, a student or two above that number. But in those classes, no student would be placed into those, no open enrollment student would be placed or added to those classes.
So column D, I'm confused because it shows twenty-five point three for column D on grade level two. How do we still have twenty-eight seats available if we're already exceeding the maximum class size?
Column D, which one?
The average student for grade two. Average students per class. Just scroll down. Do you see where I'm talking?
No.
Scroll up.
Oh, over here?
No.
Nope. There you go. Yeah. So it shows average students twenty-five point three. So how do we still have twenty-eight seats available? And that's our maximum class size.
This is looking at, they're gonna go into, they're, they're currently secondary, right? That's what it is. Kindergarten first, second.
Okay.
And then we look at. Very good. This is projecting out to either way or.
Three sections. Second graders, fourth section, third graders. Extra leasuried third grade here. Compared to secondary. Should use a secondary class for massive.
Right. Okay.
So is it.
Every year they get switched actually.
There's, uh, it's not unusual for a teacher to need to move the grade level and adjust that step. In terms of discuss doing a multi-age class or band at every school. Like, we did this in New Flares where you have first grade teacher, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and it allows you to balance that happens well. I'm sure it's, it's one of the areas that I would like to see happen, but from that, sure, we did, I, it's not something I'm going to. You know, I would, I'd want them to have ownership more.
When Ross was at Westside, he had the same teacher in fourth grade as he did in fifth grade.
So sometimes that would be, we call that grouping when they move it off.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we look at those, those caps. And that's all we do is we put those spaces there. But um, you know, here's how many seats are potentially available. To give you an idea, um, into our bracket order, during our regular open enrollment period, last year, we had roughly just over a hundred applications during the regular open enrollment period. We distribute that by fourteen grade levels because that includes four-year-old kindergarten, kindergarten. And you really end up with four or five kids per grade level. And then, so when you're looking at like elementary and you're distributing that amongst three schools, and then you're looking at how many open sections do we have? It's not a so when you look at those available, it's a significant number compared to what could potentially be utilized. Our greatest open enrollment timeframe now though, isn't the regular open enrollment window. It's from July first. And we have flexibility in that timeframe that we can cap or limit. We don't have to follow. We can deny the open enrollment if we see now spaces are really, you know, or it's just not a good situation. And we can deny that. So the only area that we're recommending the um, that's on, let me go to, I'll just spread it out. Is within our special education programs and our um, if you'll look at the board notes, I believe it's in our RISE program, uh, which services our students on the neuro um spectrum or um neurodiversity spectrum. And that has a, we have like ten students we're projecting to have later next year. It's a small magnet program that's housed out of Jackson. We started a couple of years ago. And we just don't have the space to add that, those seats there. So we, uh, any other questions related to that in the space considerations or in regards to the capping? Once, once something is capped during that regular open enrollment period, you cannot accept any open enrollment applications from that point. You're being a school year as well.
Questions? I may, I'll move to place no caps on open enrollment spaces for regular education students in all grade levels and for special education students who apply for program, programs already established within the district. With the exception of the RISE program where those seats are available for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do you have a second?
Second.
So we moved this segment to place no caps on open enrollment spaces for regular education students in all grade levels. For special education students who qualify for programs already established within the district. With the exception of the RISE program where no seats are available for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Uh, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Is it your song?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Student of our, hey.
I mean, everyone a brain break. So for Westside, sorry, on the left, it's the Gacha Day. So these are students who represent like character, sense of responsibility, safety, kindness. So they all get to pick out a book if they are that student. So there's one example. And then to the right of that, before break, they did some Christmas tree building. So using marshmallows and toothpicks. And then under that, they had, it was a secondary class. They had a class debate and they were prompts like, what's better, a real tree and artificial tree for Christmas? So that's interesting. And then on the right there, they're playing Hunger Hound vehicles in gym class. So they had to use the scooters, lay on their bellies, go to the center, as you can see, take a tennis ball, put it in the room. So I thought that was really creative. And honestly, I would do that at high school level. And then for Tivis, so the Christmas program, so few. And then in the middle, they're, they're working on the beginning stages of their Project League Way animated storytelling. So right now, they're just in the process of designing it. And to the right is another word detected.
Is this a, anything on the secondary joke?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Alright, so, on the left, we have a division master, and on your next again, there's a multiplication master. The Christmas program up in top right, and then a picture of Miss Quiz Class doing some practicing their word endings. And then at the middle school, that's a picture of the Christmas caroling that the choir did, I think at the library. And then there was a field trip to friends on the square. And then under that was just a picture from their dance that they had. And then at the high school on the left, our students worked to create on the snack in the back program that we've all heard about, so that was really cool. And then in the middle, Miss Jacobs' child development class went to Tibbetts, and I know that they were working on letters for Santa, they brought treats, and they did a bunch of activities with them, so that's cool. And then our high school choir did some Christmas caroling at, as well, alright, and then to several different places. And then under there, culinary three students took their surf save exam. And then I have always had to give a shout out to the people at Options because they always help me and Abby and save us a bunch of time by providing us the pictures and the information to go with them. So, there, on the left, they're working on their collision course for PTOW. And then the older students on the right are working on a mind map of their solution to one of the engineer's brand questions. And then the top two pictures are students working on their self-watering for their plants. So, how they can water them for two weeks, you know, it's pretty cool. And then the tower, like who can build the biggest tower there. And then for CCA, I couldn't find a lot, but I found this on Facebook, and I just thought it was really interesting and impressive statistic to share with you guys. So, their enrollment has increased by a hundred students, and about fifty-five percent of that is from other districts. So, that's really cool. And then our auto club at the high school is partnering with our community engagement, and they're working, treat a couple nights where community members, students can come in, and they can just learn the basics of carbon awareness and care. So, I have for you today.
I think we need any jokes.
Right, right.
Watsby resolutions. So, this is a list of resolutions that Wisconsin Association of School Boards puts out each year. Barb was our delegate to the Watsby convention. Let's see, have someone else do that. But what we need, what we're really doing right now is reviewing those questions. And then if there were ones that the board didn't support or whatever, then our delegate would vote against them. But we're only one school district in, you know, the whole state, so I mean, but we get one vote.
There's a lot of questions. This is gonna take me a little bit of time to read through these.
There's always a lot of.
Yeah, I.
They don't change very much, to be honest, they're often the same ones.
Okay.
They don't ever, you know, because they never go past. But they're, but they're what the Watsby uses to talk to.
Yeah.
Julie, you said that you maybe want to delegate this one.
Yeah.
So, Julia is wanting to serve as the district delegate. And then what I would recommend then is for the board members, if you want to review those resolutions and just send input to Julia, not to the entire board as a whole, so we don't violate the open record clause. But if you have a personal feeling, you can certainly let Julia know that, so she can take that into consideration of the delegation. It's, Barb, from what I've heard, it's always an interesting experience, a large room, and, yeah.
People speak to it, and it's interesting to go there. You know, you get to look around the whole state, speaking to different questions.
I've read through a few of them, and I do have an opinion on the first few that I read. I'm certainly love to hear, have input. So, I guess I need to have Jody register me on four.
Yeah, and I, I have under the announcements back here, but we'll make sure she gets her registered for that anyways.
Okay, that Wednesday's the only day I can go, though, if that makes a difference. Okay.
Registered, you registered?
Okay.
It's the week of January?
Yeah, it's next week, Wednesday.
Yes.
Twenty. In twenty twenty, so that's the year.
Hey. This is with Barb's passing, we, this is the posting that we'd like to publish tomorrow related to the opening of the school board to fill Barb Fisher's seat. There's a lot of state statutes and regulations related to that. We would leave the posting open for two weeks, which I believe puts closing date February third. Then we would go through an interview process, depending on the number of applicants that we have. My recommendation would be if we have greater than four or five applicants, then I would recommend that we do a asynchronous virtual interview where all the board members can review those, and then narrow that down to the breed of buyer that you want to bring in for face-to-face interviews. It's unique because this is the only time where the school board selects, there is so much like a job, filling a job, who you'd like to fill that seat. Barb's term would have expired next year. So, that individual, if they want to stay on the board, would need to submit paperwork to run that year. But that's the timeline, we'd like to keep it open for two weeks. Because of the timeframe for it to get published in the first, to make the statutory guidelines, you know, they don't go out on a daily basis, so. Thoughts or questions on that?
No, I had just asked Matt what our policy was here, because I got through the state statute. There's no timeframe as far as how quickly it fills, but our policy is sixty days.
The state statute is if it's not filled within sixty days, then the board president.
A point.
It has to.
I think it goes back to the policy, but the board, the board policy stays. But we're gonna get it done before that, because we don't have much interest in just applying something to.
Yeah.
So, that's due, we're in a position for the unique.
Yeah.
So, there's no motion needed for that, it's just an FYI if there's some, so that's a very good process.
And is this exactly what will be posted on then, both papers?
I would, yes, that's the.
Alright, recommendation of district administrator personnel.
Hey, this is the personnel sheet, and wanna thank Darren Gabey, who's been serving as the van driver for several years. He's gonna be retiring. And I thank him for his service, Eli Rotard, who has been working as a high school cleaner. And then Harriet Peterson, who's our second staff member that was hired to start the options program. So, she's been with, toward, and ground up, and in many aspects, I would call for a lack of words, and mother of options. And anyway, she serves as a ministry assistant, but I think a lot of people don't realize she's also certified teacher. She's worn just so many hats over the years, from her first year, when I believe we had twenty-eight students, to now where we're around four hundred. Just go out together. So, she's gonna be moving out north, I wanna give her a huge thanks and recognition for all the work and helping build the foundation of that program. I know she's sad to leave that, but it's a thing that actually that makes a lot of sense for them. And then we have the appointment of several staff members. Jessica Dodge is sports staff, Regina Tadurski is sports staff, Lana Belik is a sports staff, and then Jason Cleveland is a high school member.
So, it indicated that that, it's been a while since that position's been filled. What kind of intervals are we talking about?
So, traditionally in the past, they had like intermural basketball, intermural football, different sports. It just wasn't filled because we didn't have anyone.
You know, like the night, with the first night, it's up from six to eight, and they, it was in basketball tonight.
Okay, so it, it changes.
Changes.
Yeah.
Got it. It's not registered teams leading each other, it's more of a, you don't wanna join an actual team, but you wanna be active, so.
Okay, cool.
Can we change it to supervisor or something? Because you're really not a coach. And then what are their duties? Is it just scheduling facilities and saying it's volleyball on Thursday and basketball next Tuesday? And I, I mean, I, I need, I think there should be some clarification on that as well.
Yeah, I would agree, it's not really a coach.
Well, I, I think that's assuming that there isn't a list of, John Handle has that and supervises it. They schedule it, they organize it, they supervise it, they facilitate it. Similar to any of those other clubs there. So, we can change it to intermural supervisor, I'd have to go check the handbook and see it. I'm guessing we have it listed as.
It is an intermural.
Coach in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could always change the handbook, moving forward, we'd wanna call it supervisor, I think.
Well, and then just kinda know what the, the duties are. I mean, is John Handle or whoever going to do scheduling? And then, then do, would Jason just be there to supervise? Or would he be required to do the scheduling as well? And, and just think we should be clear on what the roles and responsibilities are for that. Because it's truly not a coach, but then if it's a supervisor or whatever, what falls on his shoulders? So that we don't get caught up in that.
I guess I always think it, they're coaching that particular sport for that evening, so.
It is. Well, we can, I would have to look at that on the personnel side, right?
Yeah, I have complete confidence that John Handle has it under control, and that he has to do these in the supervision outline. If you'd like to remove that portion from approval, we can do so and have John come back and report on what it is and how it's structured. We can do that. I, I don't have those complete answers I've been asking related to that. At Congress, it sounds like they've already got the program rolling, it's a nice state. Providing opportunities for students, which I've heard from several community members that they wanted the intermural programs going. I'm all for creating those opportunities, but we gotta have bodies who are running it too.
Yep.
Right, and I wanna know what the, the commitment and the compensation is too. If, because if we call him athletic coach, then I think that has to be in line with the softball coach or the swimming coach or the volleyball coach. And if it's just a supervision duty, then how do we weigh that out? Is that like supervising the weight room? Or I, I think there's gotta be some, some, you know, validity to, to the position and the compensation. Are we gonna give him ten thousand dollars? Are we gonna give him fifteen dollars an hour? You know, I think that needs to be clear before we approve it as well.
There was a stipend that we approved with our budget that was outlined already for it months ago.
Right.
It was just never held.
Right. No, I don't have it. Yeah.
But then is it gonna be prorated? When is it gonna start? And was, was the stipend for the full year, well, he's not a full year anymore. So, those are just the, the questions I have on that.
Now, all stipends were aligned to, years ago, Paul, and whenever we have them put the budgets together, which they put together the proposal to start this club again, they aligned the stipend or the compensation to the hourly rate that we do for the summer school teaching rate. And so, we base that off of the hour, and that's why we've made adjustments to stipends over the years. And we initially discontinued the practice of just giving them a stipend in cases where we don't know what that hourly commitment's gonna be. Because we found that there were people that were getting stipends that far exceeded that hourly rate. And so, they, when they put the budget together, and I don't have it in front of me, they would have aligned it to, here's how many hours a week he's doing, and here's what that compensation is. So, that all of our stipend positions get a comparative rate. I would say the one exception is our head coaching ones, which probably put in far more hours than what that hourly rate would suggest. But all of our other stipends, we aligned that, and when we start the new clubs, they have to put in, here's what our schedule's gonna be, and we base that stipend or that compensation off of what that dollar amount is. And if they don't know what their schedule's gonna look like, then we require them to turn in a supplemental compensation sheet. And so, we've established what that routine is and what it's.
The intermural position is an existing position on our extracurricular support stand.
Right.
What's that compensation?
It's, it depends on the tiers of service, but it starts off at seven eighty-two.
Yeah, and I, and I'm sure Jason will do a wonderful job. Jason's a very committed teacher, but I just wanna make sure that we align everything pretty consistently. I don't want the inconsistencies to be there.
No, I don't disagree, that's, we go through that process now and make sure that.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'll have to talk to Jason at some point, because it's not like I'm trying to pull the rug out from him, because I know he'll do a very wonderful job and be committed, but I just don't wanna have another supervisor or coach say, wait, this doesn't even, so. I'll trust it, but I, I just wanted to make sure that we are aware and that it was brought up and doesn't come back later on like, well, you never even looked at this.
Anybody else?
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for January ninth, twenty twenty-three, including no employment contracts in condition of home passing background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Do you have a second? So, we moved in second, it's here for the personnel recommendation sheet of Jan, for January ninth, twenty twenty-three, including no contracts in condition of home passing background check and district mandated drug screening.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Yerstall?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
I was just adding it up to the part.
Yes.
Now, we have a number of schools, we have six this evening. Joy and Shaffer's donated fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for a new lawn and triple jump pits at the high school.
That's amazing, she's amazing.
And anonymous donors donated a thousand dollars to the high school baseball team, we use it for coaches discretion. The Oak Horn Area Middle School's donated five thousand dollars for outdoor classroom supplies. Nancy and Randy Thielin donated three thousand dollars to Tibbetts Elementary. Johnny Hall is donating three hundred and fifty dollars to the snack in the back program. And the Kiwanis Club, the Belcorn, has donated. And the Kiwanis Club of Belle Corn has donated three thousand dollars to the snack in the back program. Well, I think all of those individuals and organizations for the generous contribution.
The Kiwanis have been unbelievably supportive this year. So grand total of twenty-seven thousand and one hundred dollars. That's amazing.
Looking for a motion to approve. I move to accept the generous food gifts as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
So moving to second to accept the generous gifts with Joanne Shaffer, anonymous donor, the the middle school BTO, Nancy and Randy Thielin, John Hall, and the Kiwanis Club.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Egersol?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Uh Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
We got for announcements.
Alright, I include in the board notes a hyperlink for the WASB school board convention. Um if you would like to attend, is there anyone here that knows that are planning on attending either of those dates?
Matt's already registered.
Okay, so please let um Jody know she can get you registered for that event and um it's always a very good conference, even um being able to go through the convention halls sometimes is pretty amazing, all the good parts.
Yeah, it's it's worth going.
Heather, just to throw that out there, I went as a new member coming in, it's worth going, even though you're not on board yet.
You can learn a lot from me, there's a lot of
It's, yeah.
talks, a lot of education you can get from.
It's a
Especially to the roles of the next board.
It's a, it's a good one to be at.
Alright. Um guidance regarding referendums from Corals and Brady, um that's hyperlinked, I know Jody also sent out the email the same guidance, just it's help, good for board members to be aware of what you should, can, and cannot say and so forth, because there is legal guidance related to that and what that line is and it's different, board members have more leeway than school administrators do and so forth, because you're elected officials.
My first.
We've we've always, I think, really maintained a more of an informational as much as possible, but then again, one could always allude to that a board wouldn't put forward a question unless there was support for that, but I do believe we've had board members in the past who probably didn't vote for the referendum, but they voted to advance it so the community could decide.
Sure.
So it's not a fair assumption of a deal. Then I just put in there a letter that the parents wanted to stay anonymous, we get so that's why I decided to promote a public recognition because usually I get these quite often, I I share with the staff. Um and let them know, you know, that they received this, this was a parent really complimenting the powerlifting club and the opportunities and impact that it has on the students from Mr. Stoltz and and what they're doing, so it's neat to follow them and see that success and the journey that kids have and I think whenever we're expanding those access and opportunities for kids in the district, it just helps connect that.
And if anyone wants to volunteer Friday night after the basketball game, come on down to the gym because we'll be setting up for the meet. Powerlifting again on Saturday.
That's all we have? That's it?
Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
That's right.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Egersol?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Uh Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Uh Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?